If everybody could silence their cell phones. The invocation will be offered by Pastor Ben Lee and the pledge will be offered by Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Says, "May the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord smile on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord show you His favor and give you His peace." And Father, that's what I ask right now, is that you will just have peace in this place. That, Lord, you will come in and soften hearts and be with everyone as they're sharing, Father, and be with this board, Lord, as they're helping lead this county, Lord, to make it a very great county, Lord, in Arizona, one of integrity and one of honor. And I just thank you and I just pray blessing over this time in your name. Amen.
Amen.
So I'll call the meeting to order. First up, we will have call to the public. And I have three that have already signed up, but after this, if anyone else likes to speak, they can. First up, I have George Schroeder. And please give us your basic address of where you're from.
George Schroeder, Apache Junction 2.4 Westbridge Industry. I've lived here 40 years. The city of Apache Junction. Nothing's changed. Now, I'm going to give our chairman credit for trying to do something in our city. But the two managers that we have tell the code enforcement people, "Don't do this. Don't do that. Don't worry about George." Every time I go to do something, I'm met with absolute incredible resistance. And unfortunately, and it's just, I'm just saying this as a matter of fact, I'm not going to go out on a limb here. One of those managers is a bishop. And his parishioners are the people that we had to take to court. Four times, nothing was done. In fact, they made it worse. Now they have two fifty-wheels in a motorhome in their front yard, five off-road, six vehicles. And I know this is a city problem, I get that. But now I'm having to come to the county again. I've already talked to Mr. Volker, Mr. Keller about another approach. I'm to understand that Berry Goldwater Institute does studies from government agency or government entity to government entity. And this is what I propose to do. I bought all the codes, building and the civil codes. And they just kept making it where we can't do nothing about anybody, about anything. And every time I get close, they shut me down. You go figure, they don't like me. I've been doing it for thirty-four years. I got something they can do to themselves forever. Anyway, I need your assistance. You're the government agency. You can't say that you are the only ones that can do something or not do something about to save Apache Junction. It's been a garbage city for forty years, period. Any other reference would be lying. So we got campers, squatters, illegal aliens. I've caught them all, just in my little five-block area. And they acknowledge it, but they won't do anything about it. In fact, they made it worse. They put up an illegal fence right across the street from me, saying there's nothing we can do about it. The fire department said it's illegal. Tracy Post, the inspector, said it's illegal. But they won't do nothing about it. So what do we do? I'm an empath. You have to be the adults in the room here and say, "They can't just take twenty million because an officer shot somebody to death because they didn't follow the code enforcement." It's not the first time, there's several incidents. We just pay lawsuits and just keep going, instead of the two-hundred thousand it would take to readjust the codes. I need your help.
Gail Peters.
Good morning. Members of Board of Supervisors and Natasha Kennedy, clerk court of the board. At the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I was astounded to see what happened during the questions, the ambus questions, I would suggest, that were directed by Supervisor Kavanaugh towards our county recorder Dana Lewis. I have written to all of you, asking if perhaps he might be asked to step down or to censure him. And apparently, it seems like none of that is possible. Natasha Kennedy sent me the board's code of conduct, which states, "No member shall indulge in personal attacks, impugn motives of members, staff, or public, or use language tending to hold a member up to contempt. No one appearing before the board should be treated with sly insinuations and baseless charges. This represents an abuse of power and is beneath the conduct of a supervisor." And I would add, disturbing for a man who wants to be sheriff. If Supervisor Kavanaugh had questions about whether a background check had taken place, I assumed there would be a way that he could check that out before the meeting, instead of dressing it in a public venue. If I, I have known Dana Lewis through several elections. I was fortunate to be trained by her to work as a supervisor, and I worked with her at every election since. I consider her a friend. I know her to have the highest ethical standards. She has amazing energy, passion, and is committed to election integrity. She served in our military and rose to the rank of sergeant. She has raised two children. She is universally respected by those she works with and interacts with, except for perhaps one of our supervisors. In her spare time, she is an advocate for children. She works with a historical preservation society and is a member of Toastmasters, hardly the hallmarks of a criminal. Supervisor Kavanaugh, I said, bottom line, she hasn't had a background check. Now Dana denied that at the time, but inexplicably, he continued to claim that that was the truth. What is his ultimate goal in harming her reputation? Here's what I know to be true. She hasn't involved our county in expensive legal cases that the court itself ruled as baseless. She hasn't attempted to avoid process servers. She hasn't broken into the election headquarters in Coolidge. She hasn't missed multiple meetings where she was elected to serve. Can all of us here say the same? A public apology is clearly warranted in this situation. If Supervisor Kavanaugh will not do so himself, I call on each of the remaining supervisors to issue one directly to Dana Lewis. Thank you.
Brenda Gifford.
Will I be given an opportunity to respond to that?
Yes.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Brenda Gifford. I'm from District Five, Pinell County. I'm rising to speak today in reaction to Mr. Kavanaugh's unprofessional attack on the character and reputation of a fellow official. I heartily say amen to the person who spoke before me. For someone who's running for sheriff, it raises many questions about motives. Someone who came to Pinell County using a different name in his previous life, I'd like to know why. I ask, why would he do this attack publicly? I understand that Mr. Kavanaugh tends to run for sheriff. I would like to, I would ask that he submit to the background check that he challenged Ms. Lewis to undergo. It seems to me that such a provocative challenge of another official should have been asked in executive session if there was anything of substance to it, unless there's some nefarious motive, and I think that we all would like to know what that is. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
Noel Rec from Eloy. There are some very positive items on today's agenda that deserve praise, such as the Peralta Park Award, grants for rehousing and affordable housing, grants for community developments and Casa Youth Services, grants for air quality, thanks to the Inflation Reduction Act, and the introduction of Diaper Need Awareness Week. Good economic news continues across the nation, and football season is finally here. All that ought to be cause for celebration, yet I feel pessimistic about where things are at this local, state, and national levels. I see a possible governmental shutdown, once again being used by congressional Republicans, as a reckless bargaining chip. One member of this board told me he tunes out national political issues and discussions brought before the board. That is naive. The board must tune in to this problem and make it clear to our Republican representatives that political games and a possible shutdown are unacceptable. I see an extreme field of Republicans lining up to run for the Arizona U.S. Senate seat in 2024. I see a political party that embraces a four-time indicted individual facing ninety-one felony counts as its 2024 presidential candidate, sending him millions for his mugshot merchandise. The grift continues on. I see local government entities that are incapable or unwilling to think outside the box or investigate proven methodologies. I see it here in these meetings with constant complaints about being mistreated by the Democrat Party, continual calls for election reform that in truth shroud election denialism, and meaningless requests for unification from those who continually divide. Where full discussion of comprehensive immigration reform and a complete analysis of the elements regarding the supply and demand of fentanyl are sadly lacking. I see the attack on Dana Lewis. I see the leadership of this board continuing to show disdain for the county's constituents and staff who appear before the board. So what to do now? I've never been one to give up, and I take inspiration from Roberto Ravelas, who recently took action under the Flores Agreement to interview unaccompanied minor migrants at the border, to make sure that they had three meals a day, a bed, the ability to communicate with their sponsors, and to facilitate family reunification. So today, I offer my concerns as well as my services. I wasn't sure if there was a drive associated with the week, so I offer some diapers today as a contribution to Diaper Need Awareness Week, and I invite all to donate as well. And Ms. Kennedy has the details. I will assist the county by registering voters at Eloy's upcoming Fiesta Patrias event, Costa Grande's Halloween night, and Veterans Day Parade. I intend to obtain the necessary paperwork here today that will enable me to investigate the possibility of running for my local school board in 2024. I'm pessimistic, but I'm not giving up, and I hope to regain the optimism I felt not that long ago. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman Surti, were you taking item seven and separating it from?
Yeah, I have you here for MOU.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to speak on just general issues not on the agenda? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close that. And Supervisor Kavanaugh, you are named by name, so you can respond.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So it's important that the Board of Supervisors execute their duties. And there's no, there's no personal attack on the recorder. And the agenda, a year ago, there was an item to do an ordinary background check, which was errantly omitted. I was provided information that someone with a similar, the same name, date of birth, whatever, had some issues. And I'm not going to bring those issues here in front of this. We can have an exec session on it. So the question is, did the board do their duty in conducting a proper background check with anyone we're promoting to a position? So there was no attack on Dana Lewis. But I'm glad you brought up some things, like breaking into the elections office. What you don't know is my office was inside the elections office. And one day, I locked the door to my own office on, I think it was a weekend night. I was taking a test. It was the last day of the last, the last day of the semester, and the last three hours I could take that accounting test. And so I stepped out for a moment. My little dog was in the room. I left the door open about an inch, and either my dog, my little dog, or the air conditioning blew the door shut. So I had to take this test. So this is, this is how misinformation, disinformation, we've talked about in the past, gets out. So I took the ceiling tile off and got back into my own office. There was no breaking into the elections office. My office was in the elections office, so that's nonsense. But had you come to me and asked me about some of these things, I would have answered those. I'll have a book out in about three to four weeks that will cover some of the nonsense that you discussed. The expensive legal case, I think someone asked Kent Volkmer about this expensive thirteen million dollar legal case. I was sued personally. And I think Kent Volkmer's response, there was no cost to the county. And in fact, I'm going to, I'll have an agenda item to, and two of my fellow supervisors have actually told people it costs the county millions of dollars. That was, that was erroneous. That's not, that's not the case. The thirteen million dollar case, it was initiated because I asked the county, a deputy county manager, HR director, for direction and followed policy. That's how that started. But, but I'm glad that you brought some of these issues up. My name, much like Chuck Norris, Ronald Reagan, Bill Clinton, Whoopi Goldberg, I had a, I had a, two last names, Kavanaugh hyphen Smith. While I was a police officer, I whacked the name Smith off for a variety of reasons. That'll be in the book. You can, you can buy the book. So there's no attack. I have no, I have no animosity toward Dana Lewis. That's silly. We're just here to do our jobs. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we are on to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let you, the board and the public know, the leadership team here met with the leadership team of the Arizona Department of Transportation with their director, their state engineer. And we talked about coordinating what we refer to as Carman, the Central Arizona Regional Mobility Network, which includes the extension of State Route 24 to the 60 and the north-south to meet that 24, and then as well, the Central Arizona Parkway, all the way down to Arizona Farms Road. They were, they worked with us well. We're happy that we're there. And now they're taking the lead to help coordinate with the cities of Queen Creek and Apache Junction and MAGA to make sure that we're all on the same page. So there's good progress there going on with ADOT. And then I'll just go ahead and transition over to celebrate the award-winning park that we got.
And just for the record, if we can just announce that that is item number three.
Yes, item number three, so we're on to this award.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Board. Kent Taylor, Director of Open Space and Trails. So Pinell County's first owned and managed regional park, Peralta Regional Park, was recently recognized as the best of the best in the Natural Resources Award at the Arizona Park and Recreation Annual Conference. This award recognizes an agency's significant, innovative, and successful contributions toward quality of services within the area of park facilities and natural resource acquisitions, development, maintenance, and operations. This includes physical resources, equipment, or personnel with special attention to environmental awareness. And while the Open Space and Trails Department represented Pinell County at the award ceremony, the award belongs to many more. So this board and past boards, our advisory commission and county management for support throughout the years. As you recall, this was a ten-year project, so we had many years of support. County residents and stakeholders who participated in the process and shared their vision for the park during the master plan process. Our external partners, such as Bureau of Land Management, the Arizona State Parks and Trails, and our design and construction partners. Our internal partners, who we leaned on heavily as a small department, Public Works, Human Resources, Community Development, and Budget and Finance. And finally, the passionate and dedicated staff of the Open Space and Trails Department. They successfully executed and continue to protect the vision that was presented in that master plan. And many of my staff are here, and they should stand up. Don't be bashful. They're eagerly awaiting their photo op with the board, so, and protecting the award. But first, you'll get to see a video that was produced by APRA for the awards dinner.
Peralta Regional Park is situated in the incredible Superstition Mountains and the Tonto National Forest. The overall site is 498 acres of pristine, biologically diverse Sonoran Desert. The park's 22-acre development area was littered with open fire pits, abandoned mines, trash, and scarred with OHV tracks. Through a multi-year process, five stakeholder input meetings, and public presentations to commissions and Board of Supervisors, the once-neglected land is now a vibrant park, capturing the needs and desires of the community. The less development, the better. Kent Taylor, Director of Pinell County Open Space and Trails, said of the input received from stakeholders. "This park provides access, safety, and recreational opportunities with minimal disturbance to the natural environment. The theme here is simple or primitive: traditional car camping sites with a picnic table and a fire pit. No RV accommodations or cabins here, only tents allowed." The park's minimalistic aesthetic can be seen in all added features. The bathrooms, campsites, picnic sites, camp host site, trail signs, and kiosks were intentionally designed to maximize utilization and accessibility while minimizing any visuals that would detract from the natural environment. The developed amenities were created with sustainable and innovative approaches, such as tailoring the grading and single-track trails into park amenities, thus saving native vegetation, as well as preserving historically sensitive sites and creating permeable surfaces throughout the park. Peralta Regional creates an incredible backcountry experience in proximity to over one million users. Congratulations to Pinell County's Peralta Regional Park for winning this year's Natural Resources Award.
So I'm happy to answer any questions, or, and if not, then I know my staff would love to have their photo taken, or at least some of them would.
So was it closed for the summer, and it's recently reopened, or not?
It was not closed for the summer. Camping was closed for the summer. The park was open, yeah. We, we didn't feel that camp, tent camping, when it's 118 out for 30 days straight, was really a safe exercise.
But it is open now?
It is. Yeah, we actually had a camper this weekend.
Anyone else? Are we going to take a picture? Yes.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Oh, there we, actually, that works pretty good. It's a, it's a professional term. And three, two, one, and again. One way or the other, because you're right behind her head. Nope. There you go. There you go. Surti, to your right just a tad. There you go. And three, two, and one more. This one's the happy one, right here. Three, two, one. There we go.
It looks like that concludes item number three. And they all went out the door. Item number four, any updates or current events from your districts? I have several, but I'll let you guys go first. Yes, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The twentieth anniversary of the city of Maricopa is October, being celebrated October 13th through 15th, so there's a lot going on there. It'd be a great event to attend with your family, as well as the Calvin Coolidge Days in Coolidge, October 13th through 15th, the same weekend, so the, both of those, I've been to both, both are great events. And a reminder to those who need it, Hope International Food Pantry provides food the first and third Thursdays from eight to 10 a.m. That's it. Yes?
Just in honor of nine eleven this weekend, I'll be serving, I'll be flipping pancakes across the street at the, at the Desert Hope Presbyterian Church from eight to 10. So come on down, have a pancake.
Only if you promise those are flipped good.
I'll flip them very well for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a bike drive that we've been doing for the last month and a half, and we're going to continue until the end of the month for the residents in Santan Valley. The bike drive is any gently-used bike is what we're requesting. And we have our bike, two of our bike shops in our community that's going to be helping to repair those bikes. And then we, for a rodeo, bike rodeo, that's going to come up November 4th, and the intent is to give away some of these bikes, or all of them, to the youth of our community, as well as have a bike safety and things of that nature. So our sheriff's department is going to come and participate. And we have a professional organization that's going to come and do some tricks and everything on their bike, and they're, on their bikes, and they're going to hold safety as well. So that's coming up November 4th, and right now, we're gathering bikes as well.
I have nothing except whatever you whispered in my ear, if you'll bring.
Another district, all right.
That's a different, okay, thank you.
We're back to Mr. McClure, who forgot something.
One little thing. I have a video to show of the Arizona City Library, that Natasha was so kind to remind me of, so if you could please run that. Okay, wow, we got quite a crowd today. I said, "Hey, could we add on to the library a little bit? Could we put on like 1,500 square feet for a, for a meeting space?" And all the county guys said, "Oh, we can do that." And then they came back with 4,000 square feet additional. So we got this. That's pretty cool. When I was campaigning, people would ask what it was that I could do for the community. We talked about maybe a community space to meet. I said, "Because that's lacking here."
I think the library is really a key focus of the community. So when a library opens up, or reopens up, is brought back, it really reinvigorates the town.
The old library, we had a, like a three-by-eight table in the back that was the boardroom, the conferences. Couldn't put all the board members on one spot.
When I came out for a meeting one time, we sat between the stacks at a table, in chairs, both sides of the table. We couldn't move. You couldn't get up. It was, you were just there.
It was an old sort of brick building, so the inside felt kind of dusty.
This is the old library, this shell right here, that we're standing in right now. We added on all the community center, the bathrooms, the kitchen, all the kids' space, the adults' space in the back. That's all been added on.
I love the glass walls. There's so many aesthetic components that have been added to this library to really upgrade it, I think.
And this is just so nice and open and airy, and I think that's really what they need, is just some space.
The Arizona City Library has for a long time maintained an Arizona collection of old titles, reference materials, Arizona-themed books. And we used to have those kind of in a back space in the old library. We have now opened up a whole room that is dedicated to our Arizona collection.
This is programming space. This is for, for the library to do kid events, for the book club to come in, for me to have town hall meetings, for car clubs, whoever it is in town that wants to use it, they can hook up with the library and they can come use it. And that's, that's a great, and there's a kitchen in the back, so I know the friends of the library do a soup night. They said when they used to come and hook up all their crock pots, when they'd plug in two or three, it'd blow all the circuits. Now they don't have to worry about that.
In addition to the print materials that you can find in the libraries, Pinell County Library District also subscribes to a couple of downloadable book services. They have eBooks, audiobooks, and videos and movies, comics, all kinds of things like that, that are available. You don't have to come into the library to get them, just go through the internet, you can download the titles. You don't have to live near a library. And here in Pinell County, that's important, because it's a long way for a lot of people to get to a library to check out a book. But if you can just turn on your computer and go to our website and download as many titles as you like for free, that, I think, expands library service all across the county.
What is on the screen and what is presented on the agenda is the correct information. What was read into the record is not the correct information. So if the board, when they, the motion is going to be recommended for approval as attached to the agenda item and not as presented because what was presented was not correct.
As attached?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Purchasing Division's report with the addition of, you know.
As attached.
As, with items as attached.
Correct.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Okay, on to the consent agenda. This will be done with a single motion unless someone wants to pull some items. I am pulling item number G. Celeste Garza would like to pull item number A B. Would anyone else up here like to pull anything? Mr. Kavanagh?
It was G and A D as in David?
Z.
Oh, Z. Okay, so I would like to pull A D, A H, K, and M.
Do you have that, Natasha?
Yes, Chairman, I have Supervisor Kavanagh pulling A D as in dog, A H, K, and M.
Would anyone from the public like to pull anything?
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon, can send item A J.
Okay, I will ask for a motion without those items.
Mr. Chairman, would you clarify for me? I didn't catch Mr. Ravelas. Was it A K?
J. A J.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent items as presented with the exception of A D, A H, A J, A Z, G, K, and M.
Did you get the first two? G and A B?
G and A B?
Yeah.
So I'll revise that. So it will be, I have motion to approve A through A Q with the exception of A B, A D, A H, A J, A Z, G, K, and M.
Did he say G?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go in order then as they came in. Item number G, and this is on the diaper drive, and that's a proclamation too? Correct?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct.
Is there someone here that represents that?
No, Chairman, there is no one here to represent the Diaper Awareness Week.
Okay, can we just discuss then, how does this happen? How does somebody donate? Where can they donate? And how do they get distributed, et cetera?
Chairman, they're more than happy to make a donation on behalf of the county to the clerk of the board office, and we will work with Arizona Diaper Bank to get those diapers to them.
And I think that in all of our offices, if somebody wants to drop any by, we would also get them to the correct place as well.
Yes, each one of the five supervisor districts as well.
Yes. If no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item G as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Item number A B.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Celeste Garza with Public Works. Item A B before you today in the agenda here is written incorrectly. During the novice approval process, it was changed originally. So before you is amendment number three of the build grant agreement we have with Federal Highways. The motion for the board today would be to approve as presented amendment number three to the build grant agreement 693-JJ-32040011 between the United States Department of Transportation and Pinal County through the Board of Supervisors. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Kavanagh?
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Would it also change, it says, the amendment number, then amendment number three will change the accounting and appropriate data on amendment number one. Does that remain the same?
That was an administrative approval by Federal Highways, so amendment number two has already been approved. The board didn't require any action because it was an accounting string on their behalf for their finance purposes.
Okay, so when we approve, it'll be, just change where it says two to number three in the upper portion of the item but not the lower portion, the second sentence or the latter part of the first sentence?
That is correct. So the second sentence you can omit from the motion. It would just be approving the first line with amendment number three.
Okay.
Can we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as presented amended amendment number three to build grant agreement number 693-JJ-32040011 between the United States Department of Transportation and Pinal County through Pinal County Board of Supervisors.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You all eyes have it. On to the items that Supervisor Kavanagh pulled. Are there any of those that we can do together, or do you want to do these individually?
Um.
I read through.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they're all any related.
So we'll have to do them individually. Let's do item number A D first?
Sure thing.
James Petty with Public Works, Airport Division, Chairman Surti, members of the board. I'm here to answer any questions about item A D.
Could you just give a really brief overview of this item, Jim?
So basically what it does is defines the roles, responsibilities of a finance agent that's being solicited by Morana Aerospace, who we know as Ascent Aero Services. It clarifies terms of the deals, finance deals, securities, in the event of this happens type of things for finance that might happen. It's not going to happen for sure, but it just paves the road for a successful and hopefully turbulence-free finance issue.
Okay. And our county attorney's office looked over this and approved it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
If no discussion, can we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item number A D as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Item number A H.
Chairman Surti, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder.
Why did you pull this?
Thank you. I think in the text of this, I was reading it this morning, it references the PCRC as the acronym, and I didn't know if, it said that the acronym shall mean the, the, oh, I wish I had the document in front of me. But I think it was supposed to mean something else. Can you look at that, Ms. Lewis, and just let us know if it's meant to be PCRC or if it was meant to be some other initials?
I'm looking at the agenda item, apologies, Chairman Surti, Supervisor Kavanagh, members of the board. I'm looking at A H, Alpha Hotel. I am not seeing where there is a PCRC in this item. Are we talking about breakout information?
Are we talking about what?
About supplemental information.
Perhaps. Yeah, yeah, yes, it wouldn't be here. Let me just open it real quick here. Or perhaps, Natasha, can you do that? Can you open the supporting documentation? I just didn't want to give PCRC something they didn't ask for. Can you scroll down? Is there another?
So, Pinal County Recorder's office, I do believe it should be PCRO that they inappropriately did identify the acronym.
Okay, so we should make that change, then on all the documents?
I do agree, sir.
Okay.
Is that everything then?
Yes.
Ask for a motion on that item.
So, Mr. Chairman, for item A H, I would move that we approve as presented, except within the documents, change PCRC to PCRO. That's the acronym.
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the eyes have it. Item number K.
Yes, thank you. The item K, do you have a breakdown, or do you know, and I read this, and I think in the past we've discussed it, there's a limit to the portion that can be paid for expenses versus actual work for the benefit of the public. Do you have that now? And if not, I can get it later and send it out to a constituent who asked me recent, just last night.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Kavanagh, and members of the board. I do not have that offhand. I'm looking really quick at the agreement to see how we have it broken up in the attachment. But it doesn't look like we do. So I can, we don't have a set specified percentage, but I do have their proposed budget and how it was broken out when they submitted their request for their letter of interest on the project. So I can provide that to you absolutely.
And I apologize for the late question. I got the question after business closed last night.
That's okay.
So, thank you. We'll get back to the constituent then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item K as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Item number M. Heather, this may be you as well?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
And this is the same constituent question. So when, is this to repair, this is to repair houses, is that correct? Or build?
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisor Kavanagh, members of the board. This actually is our funding agreement from HUD for the entire program. In our annual action plan that we submitted back in May, we identified the projects that we would be doing. The owner occupied housing rehab program is one of the projects within the plan.
Okay. And so the constituent could do, would they need to do a public records request, or they simply email it to get you the more information? Can they just dialogue with you about it?
They absolutely could, but it is available on our website as well.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item M as presented.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number A J, Mr. Ravelas.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, as we can see, words matter, names matter on item A J. The legal name, there should be the Democratic Party, not Democrat Party. Democratic Party is their legal name that should be there.
Natasha, is that noted?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, can we have a motion on A J if there's no discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item J, A J, as presented with the exception of changing the word from Democrat to Democratic.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. I want to make a comment, not necessarily to the public, but to the supervisors. If you could give a heads up that you're going to be pulling something earlier, I think staff can be better prepared. I know you said you just got some info yesterday, but the sooner we have that info, then staff can have things pulled, and we would have a, do a better chance of, better job of presenting these, so. Moving on to. Seven, correct? And I got a request from a constituent that whenever we're using acronyms, that the first time we mention it, that we do read it out completely. So MOU stands for memorandum of understanding, and if we could all try to do that whenever we use acronyms in the future, would be great. So, discuss approval, disapproval of the MOU between Pinal County and Pinal County Recorder for Election Services. Chris Keller.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Keller at the county attorney's office. This item is coming back to you with some recommended changes based on comments that we heard from the public and from you board members. So you have a new revised, proposed anyway, memorandum of understanding. This has also been vetted through the recorder, Dana Lewis, and you will see some changes along with, at section six, the board had asked for two different versions of that when it comes to the selection process for the elections director. I tried to accomplish that by, one of the comments was, and I believe it might have been Supervisor Miller, I don't remember succinctly, about adding the party chairs as part of the selection committee. So you do see the three party chairs being included in that as one of the ones. The other one has to do with whether it is ratified by the Board of Supervisors as to that recommended selection or not ratified by the Board of Supervisors. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe Dana is also available for any comments that she may have received regarding this. And I do believe that was, there was a speaker that wanted to speak on this item too.
Yes. Do you have any questions first before we open it up for speakers? Mr. Kavanagh?
Thank you. Speaking about having the head of political parties in the interview process, if they were to ask an inappropriate question during that interview process, and that question resulted in legal liability to the county, would we provide attorneys for the heads of the parties? Would, you know, they're not bound by our HR handbook and our policies, so how would that work?
Normally, the way that normally works is they're really operating as a volunteer, if you will, and we do extend coverage for volunteers because they're volunteering as part of this selection process. So the county would provide that type of coverage, but that is an excellent question that normally, it, let me say it this way, it's abnormal to have outside entities be part of a selection process where you are voting on that because, specifically as you asked, as you presented, you know, there are certain questions you can and cannot ask. The board, members of staff are pretty much versed in those type of things because they work closely with HR. That's not to say that if this committee was put together, that HR wouldn't be instructing them as what are appropriate questions or not appropriate questions. But as you know, at times, you know, people can stray from the script, if you will, so that is a possibility.
Thank you. And so this MOU describes other officers in charge of elections, whereas the board or other officer in charge of elections is charged by ARS, this is the second in the recital, sixteen, title sixteen, which has about 122 different items. So, the MOU is short, and so it doesn't really delineate each of those, you know, where those fall. And I have a concern that the MOU is not clear enough on all those items that may be necessary. How, you've kind of covered some things in blanket statements. Is that sufficient?
I believe it is sufficient, and maybe if I could clarify what that is referring to. Other officers in charge of elections, that, the other person that has certain election required responsibilities is not only the recorder's office, but also the clerk of the board. So the clerk of the board, you know, is responsible for canvassing and stuff like that, you know, putting those things on the agenda and getting that information out. That is what that is really referring to, or when it speaks to other officers of the board. If you'll note at section four, 4.05, I did strike out or other officers in charge of elections at that point, because that statement itself was specifically a recorder function that could stand on its own.
Okay.
It would be, it would be very difficult to go through, as you pointed out, you know, the 60-plus pages or so, to point out every one of those responsibilities, and because this is really trying to be a fluid document, and as you know, with legislature in session, any time these things could change, and we would have to come back to the board every time for any little nuance. So we've tried to make it at least flexible, but workable and accountable to get you what you've needed.
So, I'm concerned that there's, that there's not clear direction as to what the board is responsible for and what the recorder is responsible for. Is this, is, does this make the recorder, an elected or, in this case, appointed at the moment, does this make the elections, the, excuse me, the recorder subordinate to the county manager, or the county manager, the board subordinate to the, to the recorder? That doesn't seem real clear in here.
It is not making the recorder subordinate to the county manager. What you are doing in this document is transferring those functions that are board functions and putting them under the responsibility for the recorder, operating as the elections director. Those are really separate functions. The recorder has certain functions, the board has certain functions. You have the ability to delegate your functions to the elections director by making Dana Lewis or the recorder, whoever they may be at the time, the elections director. Your functions are being delegated to that individual to perform.
Mr. Chair, all we're doing is merely making her the manager under us for that.
Correct.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I might add that if we, if we go with, with option B, the, of the version B for ratification by the board, that actually, to me, that's more comfortable for me because that requires more of our five involvement in that process rather than just two, because this, what it does in that election or in the interview process, there's only two supervisors that'll be part of that process from what I'm reading here, which is fine with me, but when it comes to the final say, the ratification is where we all weigh in, and I believe that should help with some of the concerns that Supervisor Kavanagh may have if it comes out, you know what I mean? Because of, anyway, that's what I, that's my personal feelings.
And, Mr. Chair, you also pointed out that it's unusual to have political parties involved in it, and that could create, could create a problem possibly.
But that is a possibility, yes. Not just political parties, but an outside entity as part of an interviewing process. It's not unusual to have that happen, but it is, you know, in this situation, it is a little bit unique, let me say. And addressing Supervisor Goodman's comment, maybe I should point out, the main distinctions between section six with, you know, the first version and section B, you both get presented whoever the selected candidate is. Under the first version, you are presented who that selection, selected candidate is prior to them starting, you know, but you are not really ratifying that. But you would have an open agenda item so that the public would know and could, could speak on that. Board could question and do anything they want. The distinction is that not only in part B do you have that presentation, but you then have to ratify that component. So you would actually have to take a vote, board action voting to approve that person as the elections director that is being hired.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So this MOU, we have other MOUs for various things, and in this case, our county attorney's office has represented both the board and the elections. Is it typical that an MOU is executed where the county represents both entities in the contract?
Pretty much so, yes. Because an MOU is really, you know, an internal document, and unless there's a conflict that comes up, and we tried to address that, because Supervisor Kavanagh, you had raised that at the last meeting, so we tried to make that change also in section 16 to add some clarity that if either party felt that there was a conflict or any needed, you know, additional representation, that that could be provided for.
Okay, and so, in going back to something you said before, the recorder would then be a manager under the board of the elections office?
Yes. Not, I should say, the recorder is going to be responsible for those, but you're going to have hiring an elections director. So the recorder's responsibilities are basically the board's delegated responsibilities, very similar to the MOU that you had in place originally, I want to say, back in 2013, I believe it was, where the duties were assigned to Virginia Ross at the time as the recorder performing the election director duties for the board. The board had delegated those. And in fact, that was a much even more simpler and bare bones agenda item and MOU, if you will. We have tried to, you know, beef that up a little bit, add some more accountability, some more transparency, and some things that we have learned over the years.
Okay, and provided the recorder can hire an elections director, I know as we're changing some of the requirements, the election, the recorder will be able to determine what the job qualifications are. But say we've had a hard time hiring an elections director, and then Ms. Lewis, the recorder, takes over the job of elections director, doesn't that make that elected office subordinate to this elected office? No.
I would say no, because you are not filling that position of elections director. That's a separate standalone position.
Yeah, but they're, but she'd be doing all the functions, and the functions that are responsible to the board.
Absolutely.
Under statute, right?
Yep.
So there's no problem with that?
No.
Okay.
You have the ability to delegate those functions, and like I said, it's not unusual. Several counties have taken this. We have looked at multiple counties, stolen little pieces from here and there to try to put together the best document that we could for you, based on where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, I know we had at least one person that wanted to speak. If, so I'll open it up to the public for Lisa Sanner.
Good morning, supervisors and Chairman Surti. I, my name is Lisa Sanner. I am the Democratic Party Chair, Pinal County. I live in precinct 47, and Jeff Surti is my supervisor. I'm raising today in, in a section in the MOU that I wholeheartedly disagree with, and that is the involvement of political parties in determining any, any appointment, particularly in elections when we already have a politicized elections process that has been in this county, is in Maricopa County and other counties. So history teaches us about the past so that we can make informed decisions in the present and avoid repeating the same mistakes in the future. An illustrative example of this is the cautionary tale involving political parties in the hiring process of county employees, referred to as political patronage or the spoils system. This practice was prominent. This practice was prominent during Andrew Jackson's presidency, often summed up as "to the victor goes the spoils." Under this system, individuals were selected based on personal connections, ideological alignment, or loyalty, resulting in corruption, biased distribution of jobs and resources. This system's negative consequences persisted across various government levels, undermining First Amendment rights, and enabling political leaders to hire or fire based on personal grievances. The spoils system's flaw lies in placing political loyalty over qualifications, leading to underqualified appointments. Spoils system is highly inefficient, because it creates an inadequate job-person alignment, resulting in inefficiencies and suboptimal performance. It erodes public trust. It fosters disillusionment and a perception of government inadequacy. It creates instability by creating frequent turnover caused by political shifts that creates inconsistency in government policies and programs. In addition to this, having political party leaders influence and interview any candidate employed by the elections director or by Pinal County can potentially violate equal employment opportunity and civil rights laws, up to, including lawsuits. Imagine a political party chair, if I was being interviewed for the elections department, asking me, "Are you transgender? Or are you a Democrat?" Those would be highly unadvised questions and illegal questions mandated by federal Can you imagine a political party chair that has never had any EEO training and asking that, or has never had the ability to, to even take classes on human resources? County Human Resource Department should be skirmming in their seats right now. It's a sheer thought of that. And I will, because you guys have a copy, I will call it quits.
Okay. Roberto Ravelas would also like to speak.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, it's not an overstatement to say that Pinal County's handling of our elections has been less than a confidence-building success. Yet today, the public has presented a proposed MOU containing, containing serious errors, such as describing the present recorder as, quote, "a separately-elected official," unquote, and other careless mistakes. Limited time allows me to focus on the most egregious mistake, which is Provision six point zero, which clearly will not reduce, but will increase distrust surrounding our elections. Feeding distrust, distrust to professional, nonpartisan management and employment of critically sensitive elections director will now be blatantly politicized by injecting into the interview and selection process three political leaders dedicated to doing everything possible to defeat adversaries while ensuring victory for their team. Never mind that this wrong-headed provision excludes the largest group of Arizona's voters, so-called independents. This provision's language is imprecise, confusing, unclear, and referred this morning, abnormal. Quote, "A candidate interview process shall include the head," not heads, "of the three political parties prior to selection. The recorder shall present the selected candidate to the board at an open meeting prior to hiring." Inexplicably, Provision six morphs from interview to selection committee. Simple math dictates that two Republican board members, plus one Republican recorder, plus three political parties equals five votes against one possible Democratic holdout. Again, independents excluded. A process that relegates the board to the secondary role of ratification, providing a cover for intimidated members, perhaps? Mr. Chairman, please do not further complicate the human resource employment process already in place. County employees, including elections directors, are already subject to the December sixteen, two thousand and twenty policy that screens and governs the political activity of Pinal County employees. Do not politicize our county's employment policies and procedures that sustain our commitment to equal employment opportunities. By deflecting to a politicized interview selection, you members are ignoring the gorilla, or some might say, the elephant in the room, conveniently ignoring that the public distrust was fueled by an abject failure to identify the intimidation attacks that led to political elections. Do not be intimidated. Reject Provision six.
In fairness, would anyone else like to speak? Just come up one at a time and state your name and address.
My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I live in Gold Canyon, and I am the Chair for the Pinal County Republican Committee. I can't speak to the other heads of the political parties, but I would be more than happy to submit my resume to you, so you can see that I have had EEO training. I had my own business for twenty-five-plus years. Right before I retired, I was actually working for Monster dot com, which is a human resources company globally. Had plenty of training on affirmative action, EEO. I would hope that all of the heads of the political parties would know better than to ask the question that someone previously posed. In addition, in all my years of interviewing, I don't ever recall having to worry about whether they were transgender, Republican, Democrat. You're just hired based on the skills. So with that, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I apologize for my appearance. I was at the Planet Fitness working out when I called Jeff McClure's office, called and said that I should be giving my problem to the Board of Supervisors. So it's, I'm glad I was able to make it over here this morning, or to the, but.
Can we get your name and where you're from?
Yes. My name is Roland Howell. I apologize for, I have some medical conditions, and I'm losing my memory. But the problem I have is I, I, I'm an investor, and I bought, I bought about eight homes in the last couple of years, and I, I bought a house about a year ago out in, in Arizona City, and it's off of Lamb Road, is where they have had.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to have to stop you. What, when we do one subject, we're talking about this memorandum, memorandum of understanding, the time to bring up general questions would have been early on, and I'm sorry if you missed that part.
Well, I did. I was a little late getting here when I found out, but.
But you're already communicating with Mr. McClure, so maybe he could just champion your cause, and we'll, we'll put this on a future agenda.
His office is aware, and I've had some problems with it before. And we've got a big water leak out there right now, and there's thousands of gallons of water that's going down the streets, and the, we don't have, the sewers are out, and they're half and a.
Okay. So he'll, he'll follow up with that, then. Anyone else want to speak on the item at hand? If not, I'll then close this, and more questions or discussion among the board?
Mr. Chair, I, to Ms. Rodriguez's point, you know, she says she has training in EEO, equal employment opportunity, since we're spelling them out. But that's not to say that the next person would not have that training, or has that training. So that creates some issues for me, looking at, I mean, you have it, somebody else doesn't. You have it, somebody else doesn't. And that, that could be a problem further down. So I would recommend that we not have the heads of three political parties involved in the hiring process.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I tend to agree with that as well. I, I mean, I think the county's been given this position to, you know, to, to end up with an elections director. I don't know, it's not that there aren't times when outside entities participate in the interview process. I've seen it. But I think this is a pretty sensitive one, and I, I'd like to keep it as neutral as possible.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, we have, talking about ratification prior to hiring, would that be a ministerial duty, Mr. Keller? Or what, how would you characterize the ratification?
That's an excellent question. The way I have intended it, it would not be a ministerial duty. It would be an, a ministerial duty would not necessarily be a full action item by the board. It would be something that the chairman or a delegated person would probably take. In this situation, the ratification is, in, as I envisioned it, is a full agenda item for board approval, yea or nay, on the proposed candidate selected.
So two members of the board, if we, if we move forward with eliminating the extra language in Item six, where it talks about the head of the political parties, then we would still have two Board of Supervisor members in the interview. Is that?
Correct. Correct. You would have, and the recorder. And to accomplish that, you would just, you know, strike that clause, you know, in, in between the commas, the head of the three political parties of Pinal County. You would just strike that, and that sentence then would read, "A candidate interview process shall include two members of the board and the recorder prior to selection."
Okay. And so the two board members would interview, and then the other three would just be provided a recommendation?
Yes. What, what you're going to have happen is, you'll have three members interviewing, and they're going to present, out of how many candidates they, they recommend, I mean, they, they review their top candidate for ratification by the board.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, your mouth's full. Excuse me. Okay. So, so i- in that process too, I mean, in the past, I know we've had issues, I understand that, but as supervisors, we sat down one-on-one with the, with the proposed, with the candidates and talked about. So would this be any different? I mean, you've got two people on the hiring board. If we didn't have them, would we, we'd still all just sit down and talk with them separately?
You would all have.
And not, and not be involved in the interview process.
That's great. It would be individual.
Mm-hmm.
You would have the ability to review any resumes, and, you know, meet if you so choose with that candidate, to feel comfortable with them or not. You'd just not be part of that selecting and moving that person forward. Or, you know, I should say, reviewing all of whoever the potential slate of candidates might be.
And to that point, because, I mean, as was pointed out, you know, we're all one side, rather than the other. Okay. So does that create a, not an imbalance, but I don't know what, I don't even know the word I'm looking for here.
An appearance of impropriety is what you're looking for.
Yeah. There you go. Thank you.
And I don't think you can get around that. Whenever you have a board that is, you know, a political body such as yourself, it has incumbent upon, working with the HR, that you do not politicize the process, that you do not ask those political-related questions and so forth of that candidate, so forth. And that is why it also has a selection, whoever the selected person is, coming before the board, so the public would know. The public would have an opportunity then to, if you will, cross-examine the board's selection process on, you know, "We feel this was not done appropriately, because this, or, you know, this person is purely this, and it looks like it's a political appointment." They would all have that ability, you know, to pull an item and to go ahead and comment upon that.
Would, would this be a, would this create a subcommittee that would need to follow open meeting law?
No, it would not.
Okay.
Because you only have two board members on something of this type. Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
So, help me understand then, the ratification part, then. Let's say it's not ratified, two against three. Three says, "We're not going to ratify this." What's, what happens then?
Then that, that person does not go, move forward.
Doesn't move forward.
Doesn't move forward.
Okay. So we still have the final say in all of this, correct?
Under the ratification component, yes.
Okay. And honestly, that's where I'm more comfortable, because the buck stops with us, as said so many times. And, and I do appreciate what you're saying, and what you said, there's no way to get around the fact is, five Republicans were voted in, and that's just the way it is. But I would hope that we are objective enough. For instance, I had better relationship with Supervisor Reals than I do with Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Mr. Chairman, so this is a violation of our, the, the personal attack and insinuations and all this nonsense. As the young lady just said before, we have these, pardon me, we have these rules of the board, and which, which prevents attacks. So that's what you're doing, is you're attacking. It's inappropriate.
I don't feel that way. I'm just saying that as far as relationships, so I'm sorry. If you felt that way, I apologize. So that was nowhere, just like with Mrs. Lewis, there was no intent for attack, other than to point out, the relationship is more so with your previous predecessor. Okay? That's all I was, that's all I was stating. But I think that between the five of us, including you, would be objective enough to where we would actually hire the right candidate for this position. That's where I feel. And we would look deep enough in to make sure that the right candidate was voted for and put into place.
If I could comment just one, to one point that maybe should be mentioned, the board's going to have to take another action item to appoint those two members. Whoever those two members are going to be, that will need a formal board action item to determine who those members will be as part of that selection committee, if you get to the point where you have candidates that you're actually, at that point in time, ready to review.
Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may use an example that this board did in the selection process for the clerk of the board years ago, and Mr. Goodman and I, and the then-county manager, Stanley, I think was there at that time, and we interviewed her, the two of us came to the conclusion that the rest of the board needed to meet her. So we made arrangements for that to happen. I would, I visioned something like that happening in a case like this. We got to the point where we would like to present somebody to the board for their opportunity to ask questions. So, I, I mean, in other words, my point is, this, this arrangement has been used before in, in selection process. Am I right?
Mr. Chair, I'd say, but in that case, though, it, as Ms. Kennedy is the clerk of the board, I mean, she's basically worked for us, right?
Right. Well, that's true.
And, and the election director would work for us in a different capacity, but this is a different level. And I mean, even, even at that point, we, we really don't need to be on that hiring committee. So, I mean, we can be, that's fine, but, but just in looking at all this, we don't really need to be there if we're all going to sit there and interview that person individually. We're going to, we're going to get the, we're going to get the filtering through HR and through county management, and then they'll, they'll give us two, maybe three candidates that we're going to look at.
But I, I thought I heard Mr. Keller say that, yes, the other members of the board could have an opportunity to look at their resume and interview them on a separate basis.
That, that is correct.
I'm just giving you a different option, is all.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see, I hear what you're saying. Sorry. Thank you.
And one other point of clarification that, to tag on what Supervisor McClure was saying is, I want to make sure it's clear that whoever would be selected as the election director, as this is set up, will be under the hiring, firing, disciplining, I mean, the firing disciplinary of the recorder.
Of the recorder.
Not the Board of Supervisors. So at the end of the day, they will report directly to the recorder. She will be responsible for approving all leaves, the disciplinary, or removing that person.
Reviews and all that.
The day-to-day management functions of that individual.
Anything else? I think we're getting close to a motion. So, is anyone comfortable giving a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reject the MOU as presented.
Is there a second? And that has failed to get a second, so we'll look for another motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, I know you want us to use the word completely, so let me get to.
Well, we did at first, so we know what we're doing, yeah.
Memorandum of Understanding and Agreement between the Pinal County Board of Supervisors and the Pinal County Recorder for Election Services, Version B, but taking out the heads of three political parties of Pinal County.
Natasha, does that sound reasonable?
If we can just include in Section six point oh?
Yeah.
Yes.
Six point oh.
Okay. So again, So again, I, my motion, with the exception, with the
Removal.
Removal of 6.0, version B, using that, but removing the head of the three political parties of Pinal County.
Chairman, if I can just clarify the motion, okay? The recommended motion on the floor is to approve version B, memorandum of understanding and agreement between Pinal County Board of Supervisors and Pinal County Recorder for Election Services, except in section 6.0, striking the reference, the head of the three political parties of Pinal County.
And Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, referencing section B, version B of that, you did not reference?
Version B.
Okay. Good to know that I'm not alone in not getting it right.
You good?
I'm good with that, yes. That's my motion. Thank you.
Is there a second on that version of a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
And that was unanimous. That was a late aye. Was that a no?
That was a no.
Okay.
Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Chairman?
Roll call vote, Natasha.
Yes, Chairman. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yea.
Supervisor Miller?
Yea.
Vice Chairman McClure?
Yea.
And Chairman Sertie?
Aye.
That motion passes four to one with no being Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Okay, thank you. We're going to recess and go into library board. This is consent agenda. Does anyone have a motion on the consent agenda for the library board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that passes. And item number two, approval, disapproval for rules for the use of meeting rooms in county-run libraries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number two as presented.
Unless Mr. Fluckin wants to.
Do you like to speak on that?
Or is there any questions? Are there any questions?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Mr. Flacken, could you just explain some of the rules very lightly so the public gets it? Because we've said you'll be able to use this room, but how do you do that?
Yes, the Arizona City Library recently reopened.
Is his mic on?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we reopened the Arizona City Public Library. It is the second library that is operated by the Pinal County Library District, and it is the first of our facilities that has a meeting room in it. Given that it is the first one, it, we feel that it's necessary to have some sort of policy to guide the use of it by the public. Among the things that I thought were important to include in this policy were that the room is primarily intended for library programming and that that is the, the library's use of the room would be, would get precedence, that we would be able to control the booking of the room so that we could be sure that we'd have a space to do our programs in. Since the room is inside of the library, I also thought it was important to have, to make reference to our patron behavior policy so that what's happening on one side of the glass wall is not radically different from what's happening on the other side of the glass wall. We also thought it was important, because generally speaking, the public meeting rooms are not for commercial purposes or the policy prohibits any function designed to financially benefit an individual nonprofit or for-profit organization, but the traditionally, public libraries have a, their own nonprofit friends group that helps them, usually what will happen is we'll sell our weeded books from the collection and things like that. The Friends of the Library handles the sales of those things, and then they are a charitable organization that funds or helps to support the libraries. So I wanted to make sure that there was a clarification or an exception so that the library meeting room could be used for that financial purpose specifically. There were a few other specifications, but basically, the feeling is that since this is going to be a room that is inside the library and accessible to the general public the entire time the library is open, that we just needed a set of rules to help us determine who should or shouldn't be using the place, what behavior is acceptable or not acceptable.
Any further questions?
Real quickly, then what is going, is there a cost to it? I mean, obviously, there's a cost to operate it, but is there a cost to, say, the book club coming in or some?
There is not, well, in the case that you mentioned with the book club, that would be considered a library-sponsored program.
Well, I'm talking like a book club, like the, these folks out here have a book club and they're reading some romance novels, you know, and so they want to get together and talk about it with that. That's not really a library function, right?
Oh, okay. If, yes, if.
That's a private little group.
A group of people interested in any subject could come and use the room. It is my feeling, from the library perspective, that generally speaking, the library meeting space should be available without a charge. We don't address that specifically in the policy because I wanted to make the library district's policy be easily superseded by a broader countywide policy. So from the library's perspective, I wouldn't want to charge people to use the meeting room, but if, from a larger county perspective, due to in-kind contributions, for example, you know, if there is a concern, we will charge if that's what we're directed to do, but I would prefer not to.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I think a fee base is difficult to manage.
And we don't require it in the policy that I recommend.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Now I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number two as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Out of library and into health department. And is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear item B separately.
I'm sorry, what?
Like to hear item B separately.
So you'd like to pull that? Okay, so is there a motion on item A?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number B, Mr. Kavanaugh.
So this amendment says that we are going to transfer $520,000 to the Pinal Hispanic Council regarding COVID, delivering culturally and linguistically competent educational programs, supporting COVID-19 mitigation and prevention. And the funding was appropriated to the program adopted in fiscal year 2324 budget. Is this necessary anymore?
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Corey Redden, Deputy Director of Public Health, and also the project manager for this grant. I understand the question for Supervisor Kavanaugh. Actually, we, we do have some current work plan items that do address the need to educate and inform those in social, in high social vulnerability index areas on COVID-19, but also serving other illnesses and infectious diseases too, which we are able to do that in conjunction to COVID-19 and with this grant. I do want to say too that this grant was, an IGA, was approved in April, April 26th of this year. This amendment, number three, is reducing the amount of money statewide. They've looked at the spend down that will occur by May 31st of 2024, and so they've reallocated some of those extra monies and looking at spend-down plans for all 15 counties which have this grant. And we are getting reduced by $100,000. We were at 620, 620, and we are now at 520, 620. And so that's what this amendment is for. But we do have a lot of work plan items that the Pinal Hispanic Council will be finishing up by May 31st of next year. And not all of this money is going to Pinal Hispanic Council. We do have the, on page two, the price sheet where the majority of it is going to Pinal Hispanic Council, and they do provide that, a lot of education with their clients, with those in community members, and also at various health, health-related events throughout the county.
And you said other, other diseases will be covered by this? What education?
Just education on preventing other respiratory illnesses and increasing the education on any vaccine-preventable diseases as well. And you can do that in conjunction with COVID. Because if you can prevent one, you can hopefully prevent other respiratory illnesses as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, some, just to add a little more light to this, the Hispanic Council is kind of a partner of ours. They help us get to community and to the folks that, that we might not reach on a real regular basis. So we've used them in the past for these types of programs, and I think it's, I mean, we want to continue it because we want to reach as many people as possible for whatever their concerns are. So I just wanted to point that out.
If no one else, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item B as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
We will now leave health department and go back to our regular meeting. Item numbers. 10, 11, and 12, we'll do together. The discussion approval, disapproval of resolution, a lot of resolutions here, and this is all regarding solar projects down by the airport, correct?
Correct. Mr. Chair, Glenbok here with the community development presenting case. This is a 66-acre portion of the current three parcels that will be developed as part of a solar project, the bulk of which is, is south in Pima County. And this would consist primarily of a battery storage component of that. You have the three cases here, the PZPA is the minor comp plan amendment, the PZO5022 is the zoning case, and then the PZPD is the pad associated with the case.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Any questions for Glenn, or do we want to hear from the presenter yet?
And the applicant has also a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Applicant will present.
Hopefully, she's not going to read that whole book.
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, good to be before you again. My name is Carolyn Oberholzer. I'm with the Law Firm of Bergen Frakes Smalley and Oberholzer in Phoenix at 4343 East Kemmelbach. Apologize for my voice. I left it at the league conference last week trying to find it. So as Glenn mentioned, this is a solar project that is predominantly in Pima County. For context, and I won't go through this entirely, but Long Road, I think, oops, this is a good one for it. Long Road Energy is nationwide solar developer. They've got four gigawatts of solar projects. They've got many in Arizona as well. This project is 1,235 acres in Pima County. The 66 acres that are within Pinal County are shown on this map along Trico Road, just south of Pinal Air Park. And this is one of the more important pieces of this property or in this project because it's going to house the battery storage facility as well as the substation, and that's their tie into the transmission system that will take the power up into Pinal County from there. This project will serve APS customers. It is supported by the airport. There's a finding of no impact by the FAA. There's been no opposition to the project. It is entirely surrounded, except for the balance of the Latter Day Saints property as I-3. So this change would change the zoning to I-3 with a PAD overlay that would specify solar as the permitted use and some accessory uses, as well as provide for development standards and landscape buffers. And that is the site plan that goes along with it. There's a 50-foot landscape buffer along Trico Road, as well as on the north side of the project. So that's the summary. I'm happy to answer any questions. The members of the Long Road team are here as well. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, as well as the planning commissions, and look forward to bringing this high-value project to Pinal County. Just for frame of reference, it's a couple hundred million dollar investment just on those 66 acres in both the battery storage facility as well as the substation.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, quickly, we've already approved the genti for this up to the substation across the freeway, have we not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak?
Before we go into the public hearing, if staff can present, because there is some changes on one of those stipulations.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I didn't know there was a clicker up here. So, okay, so this shows the three separate proposals here condensed. Vicinity map of the proposed, and here's an aerial photo. You have the airport that's just to the west, about a half a mile or so, zoning case map. And then here's your comprehensive plan map. So you see that large circle there to the north of the project, that rectangular red spot is about half of the property, and then the remainder is, is the purple, do you see to the east, current zoning? And this is the proposed development standards. Again, the site plan overall. This makes mention of the bulk of the project being in Pima County, and here's some postings of the property, looking in the Ford Cardinal directions. This was presented for the commission's consideration and the, and also then for the board's consideration. Applicants also provided a decommissioning plan, and that brings me to the one proposed change here of the last stipulation, 18, a couple of wording changes, and that were suggested and agreed upon, and so that could be read into the record. So the change for stipulation 18 is, "Prior to construction, the owner applicant shall secure a bond or financial assurances related to the decommissioning of the subject facility sufficient to ensure all costs related to decommissioning and reclamation for the entire system. Said assurance must remain valid until all decommissioning and reclamation obligations have been met and shall be based upon a reclamation cost estimate." And staff would be happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Any questions or discussions? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me about how much that is that will have to be put aside?
That I would.
In the dollar amount?
I would defer that to the applicant, so.
Okay. I'll ask her.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, I'm looking over my shoulder because I-
I see that.
So the, and Darren, if that's, I'm inviting Darren Lawrence up to the podium. He is the manager of their energy storage operations and is probably going to be in a better spot to answer that for us.
Okay.
Well, I have the answer. It is somewhere in the order of $4 to $6 million. That will be calculated later in the process and assisted with the engineer.
I don't have a problem with the range. And then is that set in an escrow account? Or how is that managed from there? Because, I mean, this, you're probably looking at 25 to 30 years-
That's right.
Prior to-
Yes, and so this, go ahead.
Well, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I've been asked this question. And I want to have a better, I want to be able to explain it to people in the future.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the decommissioning bond stipulation that was added at Planning Commission, that we just went through the change, the change was to provide for other forms of assurances, but those will be held by the county. So those are assurances that the county will hold. So just like on your agenda today, you have multiple forms of assurances for all the subdivision improvements. It'd be managed in the same way.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on these three issues? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for, we have to do these one at a time, a motion on item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 10 as presented with this change to stipulation, no, don't do that, okay? As presented.
This is with no stipulations. This is item number 10.
No stipulations, I'll just-
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Motion on item number 11.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 presented with one stipulation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have that one. Item number 12.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 as presented with 19 stipulations.
With the chairman, if I may, if that motion can be approved with the 19 stipulations, with the change to stipulation 18 as read into the record.
Okay. With 18 stipulations?
No, a total of 19.
18 being read into the, into the motion?
With the change to stipulations, 18 as read into the record.
With the stipulation of 18 changed as read into the record. Is that good, huh? You can handle it from there?
I can second that one.
Okay, there was a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. On item number 13, public hearing discussion or disapproval of resolution 2023, IUP 00123 for Herbert Knuckle. Ryan Green.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, and Pinal County at large. My name is Ryan Green, and I'll be presenting case IUP 00123. This is for an industrial use permit to allow above-ground fuel storage in conjunction with a lay-down yard for industrial equipment. The subject site is located south of West Houston Avenue and west of South Delaware Drive in unincorporated Pinal County near Apache Junction. The landowner is North K LLC, and the agent is EPS Group, Inc. I was told they'll be here, and I don't see them, so I guess we'll just keep going. As you can see in the county map, this is located near Apache Junction in the northern part of the county, not too far from the western border with Maricopa County. And here we're seeing the comprehensive plan. It is designated as employment. And the vicinity map, we can see that the brown area is Apache Junction, and the purple area is the CI-2 zone. And we zoom in on it, with Apache Junction being the northern area. And again, the pink area is the CI-2 zone. Here, looking at the aerial map, we can see the overall industrial nature of the whole Here, we're looking north into Apache Junction, which from my understanding is currently state land. Looking south onto the site, which this is a large warehouse building on it currently. East and west. And here is the proof of posting. Parcel information, the area was zoned CI-2 in 1981 under case PZC04381. The parcel was created via a land split in 1993, and the site currently has one building that was permitted in 2000. Existing area, the proposed uses are allowed within the CI-2 zoning district and is regulated within IUP. The site is a lot within the industrial park near Apache Junction and neighbors a welding shop, a materials, material supplier, an auto shop, and a steel fabricator. The closest residence is half a mile north and west within the cities of Apache Junction and Mesa. Operation, the site will be a lay-down yard with above-ground diesel fuel tank storage. The equipment will include dump trucks, backhoes, bulldozers, graders, and other similar equipment. The site will have employees navigating the site from 4:00 AM to 9:00 PM, with customers and vendors limited to 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Here is the overall site plan, with north being oriented to the page to the left, and the northern portion will be the main entrance, with the southern portion having the equipment storage. And next to the building will be the above-ground fuel storage. Here are some photos of the equipment that will be used, provided by the applicant. And some more equipment. Impact, the site will increase the amount of trucks and equipment in the area. There are no residences within 600 feet of the site, so the reduction of quality of life is low. Hazard mitigation strategies, all fuel tanks are required to be at least 25 feet apart from each other tank. It's required to have a physical protective barrier around said tank and to have a double wall design. Staff has also included a stipulation on how to address a fuel leak in the event of a fuel leak were to occur. Here it is. In the event of a fuel leak, the site must halt operations for at least 48 hours and have ADQ or a private company examine the site to outline a process on how to clean the site, and this process must be followed. The recommendation from PNZ is approval with 15 stipulations. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm for, you know, in development like this and jobs, what, since this is fuel, wasn't there a question at one time of who provides fire service to this area?
A private fire service provider.
Okay. Is that rural metro?
Most likely. I did not look at the information, but the county doesn't have the regulations on it, so I'm unaware. Good question.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I don't think Superstition Fire Medical goes into there.
Here comes Brent.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you're correct. Chairman Sertie, this would be covered by rural metro. It's not included in the Superstition Mountain Fire District.
Okay. Thank you.
Just quickly, the fuel tanks above storage, I've worked around those kind of things before, but do they have, and I didn't notice in that presentation, do they have like a catch basin around them? They're 25 feet apart, they've got a catch basin to catch, you know, a few hundred gallons when it starts, if it does leak something?
Yes, sir. Chairman, members of the board, it'll be required that they get their permitting and licensing through ADQ, and that requires containment under the tank, double-wall tank and a number of things per state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is, if no other questions, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve item 13 as presented with 15 stipulations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number 14 is another public hearing on a drainage easement. White Wing Santan Magma, Celeste.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Celeste Garza with the Development Services Department. I think I had that wrong, but I was up here this morning. The abandonment before you today, item number 14, is abandonment of a drainage easement on a parcel located in the White Wing at Santan Magma final plat. So it's located on Lot 15. The property owner would like to enlarge a detached garage that he's going to have, and it would be within this easement. He has worked with our flood control district to relocate the easement from the north end of the lot where it's located here on this exhibit. This is the original plat to the east side of the property. So he's got an approved drainage study. This easement was recorded at the August meeting. It was a consent item. The homeowners association agreed to the abandonment, as well as the open space and trails department. There's a question use that's also identified at the plat. Let's see. I am happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Are there any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Go ahead.
The two configurations there, one looks a lot smaller. Did anybody calculate, is it a detention or retention?
It's a retention area, and I think Chris is here if we want to talk specifics. I believe that when the drainage was originally analyzed at the plating level, they may have overcompensated for the area that was needed, but I bet train, I bet Chris has some background to this.
Well, good morning. It's still morning. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Wanamaker, County Engineer. So that easement that was dedicated back in August, that, that is parallel to an existing drainage easement that's also right there. So this expands an existing easement. So as part of the review of the drainage report, we did look at those volumes, and there is sufficient space there.
Okay. And I can, I can kind of see it there, but the two didn't look like they would calculate that way, so. And we've had issues where people have filled in, you know, detentions or retention areas, and it does cause problems downstream. So, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Just for reference, Chairman and Board members, we are updating the Development Services Code for the abandonment of these drainage easements located on private property to be an administrative function so that they're not before you in a hearing, and, because it's more of an engineering technical issue and approval versus the board.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address it? Hearing seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 14 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. 15, approval, disapproval of abandoning an easement on Siesta Street.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Siesta Street is located in the northern Apache Junction area, it's in section 13. The property owner would like to build a building in, within, very close to meeting setbacks within the easement, or outside of the easement area, but also meeting setbacks. This portion of Siesta Street is not maintained by Pinal County, nor do we have any future plans to do any improvements. The petitioners have obtained the signatures of the adjacent property owners. Oops, I thought I had some photos, but maybe I don't. And then utilities do not object to the abandonment, so happy to answer any questions on this one.
Are there any questions? Okay, this is also a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on it? I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item 16, approval or disapproval of recommendation for the liquor board. For, and I believe, Paula, will you start this and then go to the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Paula Malinex, I'm the code compliance manager of Development Services. I review the liquor license that come in to see how it applies to what they're currently zoned. This property is three and a third acres. It's SR zoning, suburban ranch. So when I saw a farm winery license come through, I called the applicant, excuse me, Nick Brower, I hope I'm not butchering his name, and talked to him. And he was very cooperative, and what he was saying is he wanted to manufacture the wine on the property, import in grapes, grow some prickly pear, and make this kind of a thing, not for sales on-site. So after I talked to him, I said, well, there's probably some planning processes he'd have to go to, and we would do a positive recommendation if he would start that. He immediately jumped on it and called our planning department and has been working with them ever since, so that he would be able to do this. So he's just, you know, he said he wants to do whatever he has to, to be able to do this, but there would not be sales. It isn't wine tasting or anything like that. He just wants to produce wine on the property, manufacture, and bottle it to sell off-site. So do you have any other questions?
Any questions for Paula? It sounds like the applicant wants to get in a free plug, so let's hear from him.
You bet.
Members of the council, my name is Nicholas Brower, and this is my wife, Breann. We are hoping to apply for this winery license. We really wanted to assure the council that we are not doing anything to disrupt the neighborhood that we are living in and trying to raise our own family in. It's a wonderful neighborhood of quite a few lots, over three acres, some as big as five and a half. It's a relatively quiet neighborhood. The loudest thing we hear is Ironwood, which is, you know, hundreds of yards away. So when I wanted to expand my wine-making, which has been a hobby for some time, I basically wanted to bump up into the range where the federal government started to get involved. And they require, obviously, licensing, and I'm unable to sell anything without that licensing, so I applied to the state and the federal government. I've been doing everything I can to try to compensate for any issues that we may run into or get ahead of those. And, thank you, Paula, I have really been working very closely with the county as I can. And like Paula said, my intent is not to break my zoning. I have no intention of bringing customers on-site. I don't want customers at my house. I don't want to be serving them wine there. I just want to manufacture. One of the issues that this license throws is a Series 13 does allow for on-site liquor sales and service. It's not something that we want to do. It also allows for up to 40,000 gallons, which I think is a crazy amount. I couldn't even imagine making that much. We're looking to produce less than 2,000 gallons on-site, just enough to basically pay our own bills. We're not looking to start a large commercial operation here. We do want to do this the right way, so we are looking for approval here. And we were looking forward to being a part of this community as a small business. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Just quick, you have a cabinetry shop next door?
They did, yeah. Actually, he just retired. He was a source of quite a few fumes, but, so I'm not, I'm not super sad to see him go, but no, I, this, this is actually quite a few, I have a list. Our neighborhood actually has quite a few businesses. There's some steel framing that goes on. He does some on-site, and then he moves and finishes on the construction site. There's a nursery that's more business-to-business, it's not public-facing. There's a custom auto body guy. He does very custom jobs on classic cars and stuff, and he actually moved into the cabinet makers shop. So he's, he's one of, like, we have a lot of this happening around us, like you said, the cabinet maker who just retired. There's quite a few contractors that store a lot of equipment on-site. So there's stucco and lath, cement. There's even somebody who runs a small kind of informal petting zoo. It's really a great neighborhood, and there's a lot of small businesses in it already, so.
So I guess my point is that the neighbors aren't going to worry about this.
No, as a matter of fact, I actually have, yeah, I have support. One of my neighbors hand-wrote a note. This is my, this is my neighbor to the north. I can read it if you'd like, but I- This is my, this is my neighbor to the north. I can read it if you'd like, but I have a couple from other, other.
Oh, no, that's okay. I mean, he's just looking for a bottle of wine. I get that. That's good, you know. And I have to, I have to compliment you, by the way, on your baby. He's
He is adorable.
Great all day, and I see mom rocking him back and forth, but he's like, great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number sixteen as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number seventeen is another liquor license for Sombreros.
Hi, good afternoon Chairman, member of the board. Paula Mullenix again, Code Compliance Manager, Development Services. This one, Sombreros, it's not built yet, but they have, we recommended a positive recommendation because it is going to be a restaurant. It's CB two zoning, which is a commercial zoning. Currently, they have gone through, I believe it's finished their site plan review, SPR zero zero eight dash twenty-two. They do have a building permit now, so they are actually going vertical with this building, and that's PER twenty-two dash zero six two seven eight. It was initially started at risk until they got through the site plan review. So a lot of these, when I called, because if it's anything questionable, since it was just a vacant lot, I usually will call the applicant, and they were saying for them to move forward with this business, they have to be guaranteed that they would get a liquor license. So that's why they do it so far ahead. And I've noticed this trend at the county. We've got a lot of them, Chipotle and different ones, that there's nothing there on the site, but they want to go through and try and get their liquor license established. So we don't have a problem with this one, but do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions?
I just have to say for Supervisor Goodman, it's not another car wash, which is right next door.
That's right.
So.
It's Sombreros, baby.
I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number seventeen as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes. Item eighteen, liquor license number three.
Once again Chairman, members of the board, Paula Mullenix, I'm the Code Compliance Manager for Development Services. This one is a little bit different. It's El Rancho Robles. This is a guest ranch that I've lived in the area for over twenty years, and it's always been there. When it originally was zoned in nineteen sixty-four, it was CR two, which CR two at this time would not allow you to have a guest ranch. However, at that time, in nineteen sixty-four, guest ranch was part of that zoning. So they've been allowed to continue because they have not discontinued the business for twelve months, and if they did, you would lose that nonconforming status, and they have not done that. However, when they, they did come in, when the new owner came in, which bought the property in twenty twenty-two, they came in to do a rezone and our pre-up rezone, and in the documents, they said that they wanted to rezone it to be able to expand the nonconforming use, and they wanted to make it into a resort. Well, they came in, went through the process, got comments back, and then we never heard any more from them. And then the property was sold to this person that was the applicant on that with the property owner, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell in two thousand eighteen had applied for a liquor license for El Rancho Robles. We said that had never been in allowed use with this guest ranch. They have a lot of special event permits that are allowed with weddings and whatever, but for them to actually open bars and liquor serving, so he had somebody else there managing it. They went to, it's probably too much information, I know, but they went to Three C Ranch that is out by the zip line, and that gentleman started working there. Well, then the owner sent a letter saying he did not want to continue to get a liquor license because he wasn't really sold on it at the time to open up a bar. So when this applicant applied for it, if you looked at the site plan on it, it shows three separate locations for bars on this guest ranch. So when we see that, you know, that gives us concern because that's not one of the nonconforming uses coming up. However, since they had started the process with this in twenty twenty-two, we're hoping they'll come back and continue the process. So that's where we are right now. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number eighteen as presented. Second.
Third, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item number nineteen, discussion approval disapproval for new job classifications. Mary Ellen.
Chairman Sertie, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepard, Deputy County Manager. Today we are seeking your approval to create new classifications to meet the needs of our elected offices and our departments. These classifications include the creation of an HR specialist, a role created to assist functioning HR units in departments with paraprofessional level duties. That level of support currently doesn't exist in our classification structure. The role is found in our comparator agencies, and we are seeking to adopt a similar classification here in Pinell County. We are also asking for a learning and development manager classification to lead the county's leadership and employee development program for employees at all levels. This is a part of ongoing efforts like the recent amendment to the county's tuition reimbursement policy to provide meaningful opportunities for professional and career growth. Finally, we are seeking modifications to the classification series used to support our treasurer's office. In working closely with our treasurer, Mr. McCord, and his chief deputy, Kelly Monroe, we have determined use of broad classifications found currently in our structure is inadequate given the treasurer's unique financial, banking, and tax service roles. Before asking for questions, if I may, I'd like to end my comments with two thoughts. First is a special thank you to Kim Verdugo and Courtney Obragon, HR team members, for their tireless efforts to ensure our classification and compensation practices are current and effective. The county is very fortunate to have these two employees. I'd also like to assure our elected offices and departments that these classification compensation efforts are ongoing. We are aware of a number of needs that exist throughout our county, and in addition to the board approving large across-the-board increases the last two years, we will continue to do market studies, introduce new strategies to help keep our pay practices competitive and legally compliant. Thank you, and may I answer any questions you may have?
So, seven positions, there's already those seven personnel there. They're just being reclassified? Are we beefing up that whole department?
Chairman Sertie, yes. They are, the people in positions currently exist, and when new positions were asked for, that was approved in the budget for this year. What we found is the title of those positions, and therefore the minimum qualifications in the job duties didn't match what they were actually performing. So that creates inconsistencies amongst the workers. It makes it more difficult to recruit when recruiting for an accountant who's performing tax-related work.
Mr. Chair, this goes back to our desktop analysis of departments looking at what they need, what they need to operate, and then classifying people the proper way so that we can hire. That's what you're saying in a nutshell.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor, Supervisor McClory, next time, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to come up and present because yes, that's what I was attempting to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item nineteen as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, requests for future agenda items. I have a couple. One, I get a recent inquiry from constituent wondering on the procedure that, that we do and why don't we follow Robert's rules. We did talk about that not long ago, and we use a modified version. I think it might be helpful for the public if we just have another refresher and just show the folks why we do what we do. She actually asked why we not make motions and then discuss it. Instead, we discuss it and then make motions, which, you know, people are always moving here. They're still, they're gaining, you know, they don't know the tradition that we've done. So I think in the future, it would be good to revisit that, and maybe to put some things on the website of how we do. Just for instance, we had a guy here this morning who did not know that he had to be here early to, to do call to the public. And then I have another one that I want to add in there and talk with Mr. Goodman about it. When I was in school, whatever class I had right before lunch, my grades went way down because I have a semi-eating disorder, and I need to eat lunch. And if it gets to be in three or four in the afternoon, and if you're presenting before this board, I, I don't have the concentration that I have after I've eaten. So I have a stash of Reese cups here. I would like that we could say by one o'clock, we have a twenty, twenty-five minute recess to eat some kind of lunch so that we can be at our top. So I, I just want to, I don't know if that's just my prerogative to do that as chairman, but I won't be chairman in a few months either, so I would like to possibly address that. And then one other thing, I have a resident that's turning one hundred and two in October, and I would like to have some kind of a presentation. He's a World War II veteran. So that's probably another thing that I could just do as chairman's prerogative, but I'd like to kind of get that on the agenda to honor this fellow. Okay. Item number twenty-one, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Actually, there's a couple of things. I think Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August twenty-fourth of last year, I think I had asked for an item, a secondary administrative review looking into issues leading up to the twenty-two election failures, and I think County Attorney Kent Volkmer said during the discussion of, with, involving Brad Nelson to, to prepare that secondary review. So I'd like to ask Kent Volkmer to, to finish preparing that and present an administrative review in the issues leading up to the twenty-two election failures. And that's it.
Okay. Now a motion on exec?
Actually, if I could, for instance, on, and maybe this is one that we could add to the library agenda, is that I'd like to have a little bit of a dialogue between us in regards to some of the items and things that are being actually included in some of the things. I've had several constituents call me about questionable, what they felt were questionable items that are books, for instance, that they weren't too happy about being exposed to some of our kids, and so, and so I'd just like to have an open dialogue and open discussion. I mean, we are the board for that, for the library district. Supervisor Kavanaugh brought something up in regards to the amount of expenditures and things that was related to some of the items over the course of his service. I would like to see what kind of dollar amounts that have actually been, and I would assume I think that they could use in the calculation billable dollars or whatever the case may be, and even some of the legal counsel that was provided to him outside, and some of that nature, as well as even some of the disclosure of some of the payouts that were made. Overall, what did, what has it actually cost the county in different things? For instance, Supervisor Miller and I was under the, anyway, those type of items, all of them. I'd like to ask that they be presented and talked about.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to comment on your thoughts about taking a break. I serve on some other boards and commissions. I think, I think you have the flexibility of, of including a break for, for lunch in any of our meetings. If they're very lengthy, I think it's proper that you go ahead and, and do that. I don't think that that's breaking any kind of protocol.
I would, I have one other item.
Just if I could real quick.
Yeah.
On the items that were presented that are talking in regards to our ethics and things of that nature, kind of the dialogue that you went off of and kind of put the information out there, I think we actually ought to review some of those items and maybe have an open dialogue and an open discussion about what may fit, what may not fit. I mean, it's been almost a year now since we adopted those, and it might not be a bad idea to review them and.
We could include that in the same meeting of just.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Protocols and.
Okay.
On two occasions, Mr. Goodman mentioned that he had received aggregate. One time he said his, his wife handled a transaction on February first. He told me that it was aggregate, not payment, whether it was county surplus. I don't know, but I think we ought to have a. We ought to have a.
That, that's fine. That's fine, but there was no aggregate. I've been offered for you to come anyway.
So this would, we'll talk about this at the proper time then.
Fair enough.
Now I'm going to ask for a motion for executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move, I move that we recess and move to executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An exec. Okay, so we are out of executive session. I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're out of exec. Now, discussion approval disapproval of a judgment for property tax. Chris, if you'll explain.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an item that we just discussed in executive session. It concerns a offer of judgment from Southwest Gas on what's known as a centrally valued property case. It's property taxes for the year of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. The matter is currently in litigation right now, and centrally valued property cases are defended by the Department of Revenue through the Attorney General's Office Tax Section. And in the course of this litigation, they have received a offer of judgment to settle this for a set, set amount to resolve this, and you have a certain, certain amount of time that will expire on September thirteenth to either accept or reject their offer. We are not the only county that is involved in this litigation and has received this offer. Cochise, Graham, Gila, Greenlee, La Paz, Maricopa, Mojave, Pima, and Yuma have also received the same offer. And we are at this point in time recommending to accept their offer of judgment to resolve this, which will also set a floor for the coming year, twenty twenty-four, calculation of the tax. Any questions?
Are there any questions or discussion? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-two as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. And with that, we will officially adjourn.